Hey Hunter, can you hear me? Kelly, can you hear me? Can y'all hear me? Hey, can y'all hear me? Can't hear me, alright. Let me pull, make sure that the speaker is set to the TV which is like a bunch of letters in something. I don't know what's been going on with our WebEx lately. Oh, yeah, that'll explain it. Okay, cool, that'll work, thanks. Hey Hunter, can you tilt the monitor down a little bit more? Hey Hunter, can you tilt the screen down a little more? Thank you. I can't tell what Rich is saying, but he's definitely saying something. Okay, I think, I think the settings are correct now. Hey, would someone mind testing their mic? I want to see if the audio comes through, through WebEx.
One test.
This is a one hen, two ducks, three squawking grease, four oysters from the sea. No, I said that wrong, oh my god.
Okay, it definitely works. Oh my gosh.
Let's talk later. I've spent time there. I went, I've been there. Soufere, not, not a good place. I didn't stay in the-
It's a developing nation for sure.
Yeah.
The embassy helps, it's a whole-
That's really awesome. Yeah, that's awesome. I can't wait to hear more about it. Alright, here you, here you. Do we even have a forum?
I think we do.
You have a forum, this is a forum.
Well, right, but no, everybody's here.
Michael, Michael Lavell will not be here, but, okay, yes, okay, excellent. Alright, you ready? Alright, I'm gonna call the Marvin Planning Board meeting on November 15th to order. We have a quorum. Has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes ma'am.
Kelly?
Yes.
I can't see, I can't see who's not there, can you state who's not present?
Michael Lavell is absent. He let us know that he was not gonna be here and then I think he's the only one that's not here? Yeah, he's the only one.
Thank you Kelly.
Yep. And you're, most, Austin, most of the planning board is out of your view. Cause the camera is. Just saying, there we are. Yep.
Hello.
You almost got everybody, almost, keep going. If I'm in, you're in brother.
That'll work, thank y'all.
Alright, thank you. Alright, could we have a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Second?
Second.
All in favor? So moved? And adoption of the previous minutes, does anyone have any questions, comments, changes for the minutes for the previous meeting?
None.
If there are none, if someone could move to approve?
Alright, make a motion that we approve. Any minutes?
I will second.
All in favor? Okay, you could, okay, sorry. Alright, so moved. Public comment, I don't know if there's anyone signed up?
I don't think there is, I think everybody here tonight's applicant or for the training.
Alright, excellent. Moving on. I don't even know if we have, we don't have hybrid availability anymore, right? There's no one online besides?
No. The only, only people that'd be online would be applicants that we share the link with if they couldn't be here in person, but public wise, no, we do not have public participation.
Gotta be here to play, alright. So, first item on the agenda for discussion is the zoning text amendment application for the Marvin Women's Center. So Hunter, if you will walk us through that.
Yeah, so just wanted to kind of briefly get you guys the staff recommendations for the proposed text amendment. I know that we went into discussion last month and do not plan on you guys making any recommendation, it's mainly that I want you to see the recommendations that staffs made. I have consulted with the applicant who's here, it's Ralishian, the attorney for the Marvin's Women's Center as well as our attorney. Both are, we're good with this direction. Basically, last meeting we kind of discussed the civic district, the zoning district, establishing all that as well as, you know, still trying to adhere to their zoning text application request. The civic district, just with everything on my plate at the current moment, like I'm not gonna be able to really formalize that as well as that's gonna be something that I want you guys to discuss further. So this is kind of a building off of what their original text amendment application was submitted and kind of cleaning it up. Basically, the first thing we would do, and there's kind of two options, would be to update our definition of church and house of worship. Option one, and this is, I'm referring to like the memo in your guys' packets that look like this. Is we would delete our church and house of worship definition and redefine it as religious institution. Most zoning ordinances that, I mean, that I've looked at and everything, kind of, it's all mostly defined as a religious institution and almost the same definition. The second option is really just adding to the current definition and having it just read the additional language that including accessory use or structures such as school, daycare center, cemetery, and dwelling located on the same lot. Once again, that's very kind of standard, it, from a staff level, it really doesn't matter, it just depends on if we want it to be considered a religious institution, which still does consider, or does include church, synagogue, and all that other stuff, or just do we want to leave it house and church, house of worship?
I have a question about the, the phrase "school." Because there are little church schools like after school care, daycares, and then there are like St. Matt's. You know, it's like K, pre-K through high school, so or middle school, I'm not quite sure how they go up, but, I mean, obviously a school wouldn't necessarily fit on that property, but how do you address that?
Depending on the size of school, then, school is then has its already separate definition and use. So to your point, like, it, the school use itself would then be defined under what that definition is, which I don't have it in front of me. But really, yes, the intent of that is any type of small organization, if they're building another structure and stuff, that's where we'll kind of get into the second part of the proposed text amendment recommendations. But for the most part, the intent's like saying, hey, here's what church, house of worship, a religious institution, whatever direction we've, you know, find fit, like I said, it's both achieving the same thing. That's what it's defined as, that's in the principal use, and it just, school vaguely is a, yes, a, and it kind of an accessory use with that. So, trying to then sum up what you were asking is like anything small scale is kind of then included once again under that same umbrella, if it was a larger school type institution. That, that's where it would be up to the staff as to kind of then interpret that, and since we have a school definition that defines, you know, the education and the facilities and so on already in our zoning ordinance, it would most likely, it would fall under that definition slash then that would be the use.
Does that require a special use permit or?
School.
Different, I know you don't have the ordinance up, but like-
I'm pretty sure, I gotta, let me-
I remember there was a private school trying to purchase a piece of property and it had a process.
Elementary and secondary schools will be permitted, will be a permitted use if the parcel is rezoned to the education overlay district. So basically, we have the education overlay district in our zoning, so for school to be kind of a grand scale things, and that would require them to go through the rezoning.
Okay.
So then getting into the actual, kind of, what the text amendment's trying to achieve as well as from a staff, staff recommendation standpoint is, the biggest issue is, yes, we didn't have, it just said customary related uses prior, and then their text amendment was for, to allow for nonprofit customary related uses. Basically, what this outlines is what, except, what accessory uses and structures would be under that church or house of worship religious institution umbrella. It reads, and I have talked to our attorney today, basically, this is the language we would use, and then I, now, if everybody's okay with it, from our planning board kind of agrees, and it's then, like I said, kind of getting it into the actual text for the formal text amendment that you guys will consider it next month. But once again, it just reads churches, synagogues, and other places of worship and their customary related accessory uses such as religious institution office, religious bookstores serving the immediate congregation, parking lots, family life centers, multipurpose facilities, all that, like that, that kind of then defines what the accessory uses are, kind of more clearly. It would still be required under a special use permit. One change that our attorney and stuff recommended is the second, or I guess the third to last line in that first paragraph. It says on the same site or sites contiguous to the principal use, we're gonna just leave it probably same site, and then the regulations after will, where one and two, where it says similar uses on non-contiguous, it would still allow it on different sites as in contiguous to the parcel. For example, in this situation, since it is a separate parcel, but then they have to meet these special requirements. So then it kind of then covers where if they combine the parcels as was conveyed to us the last meeting, then it still kind of follows under that same umbrella, and it's more clearly defined. If they don't combine the parcels, then they have to go and get the special use permit for that accessory use.
And that's still assuming that it falls underneath the educational overlay, if it's non-contiguous. So what if it's across the street? I haven't seen, that's why I'm a little bit-
Well, the education overlay is in reference to the school for Kelly's question, this is, the text amendment's mainly for the accessory use of the nonprofit, the family life center. So, if the parcels are combined, then it falls under that same umbrella, and it kind of clear, then it clears up our ordinance for clarification for the applicant as well as anybody moving forward on what those accessory uses instruct, and are to that house of worship. Basically, if they combine the parcels, the church, because where existing village hall sits, it's its own separate parcel. And it's owned by the church, even though it's contiguous, it's like a C shape, it's kind of weird, but if they combine them, that becomes one parcel. The parent or the principal use of that parcel would be the church. Any other uses on that parcel would be the customary related accessory uses as defined here.
Would that then include also, we mentioned before, potential housing for people in short term? I don't see anything on here that says anything about housing, but I realize it's currently zoned residential, so how does that work?
Did you mean housing from a?
They weren't talking about a permanent, the applicant has discussed, you know, missionaries that are coming back and/or people who are getting rehabilitated back into life after drug addictions, halfway house, that sort of thing, and so how would that work into this?
Halfway houses are then determined as, once again, we already have that definition, so that would have to meet the criteria for that. If it's for missionaries in like dwellings, that is considered like an accessory use type, like a parsonage, and that's originally what that was, so it's kind of covered there. Basically, if it's on the same property and they, a halfway house is not considered, would not be like fully considered as a customary related use per this definition, but we do have a definition for it. If they're using it as a dwelling parsonage or whatever for short term, it kind of then falls and falls, falls under that same umbrella, but any changes to the, any changes to the special, to that use would potentially have to receive either an additional special use permit, approval, or an amendment to the original approval of it.
Thank you.
See in there is something regarding the use of sports facilities or activities. Just curious about how much that can be if they combine that land, because that's gonna be a wide open space over there.
Well, and that's where, once again, this, what I pulled this from is pretty standard, I think I looked at like Huntersville, Davidson, Locust, there might have been three reports, and then all their language is pretty much the same. Kind of the intent of that is with sports fields, once again, it gets in, it's, once again, it's open for interpretation from a staff level depending on the severity, significant of the use, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Like, one ball field associated with the church is a customary related use. Ball fields that are used for multi-purposes then would fall under the recreational field use in our ordinance. So, that would cover that as well as if you're trying to say, if you were just wondering if they would be able to do something like that, it would still have to come through either on a staff level or even to the special, to planning board and council for a special use if they were trying to build additional fields. With this, with this specific text amendment and this specific application, the building already exists, so it's kind of, once again, falls in that umbrella, if they would like to expand or any of that, that's where they would have to, once again, go through additional approval processes.
Okay, and what kind of signage is it like?
If it's based off of what's being proposed, if it's on the same property, it would just have to comply with their sign ordinance, if it's on a different property, they wouldn't be allowed any type of signage.
Talking about lighted signage and things like that, possibly?
Well, it would just have to comply with our current sign, sign ordinance, so it's, once again, it's, it's one of these questions where it's, I don't know until they propose something, and to, to, to know if it would comply. But we are, sign ordinance is pretty, pretty straightforward.
Is this considered a vote on this when we decide to, part of the Marvin Heritage District?
The property itself is within the Heritage District boundary on the future Lanius map, but it's not currently zoned, the Marvin Heritage District.
So I'm just trying to distinguish my-
Oh, yeah, 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 no, I think you're fine on that.
Okay, yeah, but I do want to get to the other item. I may, like I said, mainly wanted to get this to you guys. If you have any other additional questions or recommendations or anything, you know, feel free to shoot me an email, give me a call. The plan is if, it sounds like you guys are okay with kind of how this is being outlined or the direction. So I will then like, like I said, do the same thing I'm doing with the gates of private roads, formalize the actual like text where you'll see the red, the blue, you know, all of this, that all that's changing, and what sections are changing, and that will be presented to you guys at the December meeting.
Great. That's helpful, thank you. Alright, I'm just like sitting here reading, like, no, move it on. Alright, discussion and recommendation of the estates at Marvin Acres, the Brantley Farm property, AKA Crickets Old Farm. The subdivision sketch plans submitted, did everybody, they sent over a very detailed document with all the changes, the discussions, just a lot of information that they, they've been very busy.
Sorry if I was messing with you, Hunter. Can't hear you Hunter, just letting you know.
I don't know, this is not, it's been stinking lately.
Has it really? Interesting. It's like the exact there this weekend all.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know why certain times of the year- Yeah, I don't know, I don't know why certain times of the year it smells more than others. Or what there's that, is that, is that a pump station in Mecklenburg County? Is it a pump station? But right when you're crossing Evergreen Union.
Hunter, are you trying to share something?
Meeting. And we made some significant changes to the site plan, so we're excited about it. So the first obviously being the entrance from Marvin Road, we've moved back to Joe Car. We had several conversations with Division 10 NCDOT regarding the entrance and and how that would be staggered off of Pacer Lane. To have a staggered like that is to avoid the uh the wetlands area and the hill splitter buffer area as well. And having that entrance off of Joe Car like that, that was really the only option that we had. They didn't want it on the left side of the existing home there on Joe Car because of the future plan roundabout. So it was going to be too close to the roundabout. So we were able to more or less jumpstart the plans for the roundabout with NCDOT. They essentially said if we were able to donate the right of way, they would start getting the the site plan ready. I think they gave that responsibility to to Hunter more or less, but that is in the works. Uh, so we've just put a very preliminary outline of what that would look like on the corner of Marvin Road and Joe Car. You'll see a little carve out in the corner there for the roundabout. Obviously, that is subject to change once we get more specific plans. So I I believe Hunter is also working with NCDOT on just some temporary measures there until we get the roundabout. Being a traffic light, I'm not sure if you had any um any luck with that.
Yeah, one thing I'll add real quick on on that, so they amended this plan to allow, it's kind of more of the view shed where then for potential right of way dedication for the uh future potential of a roundabout. Once again, like there's not a roundabout that's funded, there's not a roundabout that it at this time has been funded, we have not submitted an application to CRTPO to be funded. And it would be something that's most likely anywhere from three to seven years out by guys in full construction. So part of the idea that, and I discussed with our engineers, that he, they're in the process of one, doing a 2D or kind of a preliminary design of what the roundabout would look like. So we, that will kind of be on their side plan for when you guys see in December. The other option is knowing where the preliminary roundabout and the design will look like is working with DOT to do uh temporary like spot safety or just temporary intersection improvements. Since we'll have the right of way being donated, doing uh scene of DOT, we can potentially do a churn lane as well as an inter, a light there just for temporary, once again, safety. And all of those improvements will then be brought or kind of already associated in with the construction of a roundabout. So it's not like we're going to be doing something temporarily and then it's just going to get torn up. Basically, they would construct like the churn lane and the certain right of way improvements to already be like a leg of the roundabout or or one section of the roundabout. So that's kind of the goal. I should hopefully have that stuff back from our engineer tomorrow. Uh, and then I'll have those conversations with DOT and all that information will now, and then I will update you on all that information at the December meeting as well.
I did also bring up the uh the speed zone, that's a current 45, just to see what that process would look like to reduce it to a 35. And they had mentioned the construction of the roundabout would kind of reassess or trigger a reassessment of the speed zone there so that people aren't flying into it. So we uh, let's see. Um, in our October planning board meeting, we were asked if, I believe it's now lot 21, it's one of the five acre estate lots, uh that essentially was on the northeastern side of the property. And we were asked if we would consider kind of reconfiguring that and putting it up adjacent to Marvin Road, which we have done to kind of give more of a buffer in between Marvin Road and and the homes. And that also allowed us to really move the site plan around a lot to get more common open space area as well. So I believe now we're up to six and a half acres of common open space. And so we are asking to uh for a view shed reduction because of the uh the 200 foot buffer for the hill splitter. And so much like Marvin Branch and I believe it was Elysian Fields, we we are asking for a view shed reduction as well. The Marvin Branch and Six Mile Creek do take quite a bit of the the buildable land. So we have also, we're dedicating a right of way easement for the Greenway Trail as well, and that would be on the northeastern side of the property. Very hard to see on that site plan. Uh, and then the side block on Joe Car as well, we've dedicated that that right of way. So we're, we're looking at, I know this was brought up last time as well, price points and square footage, so we're, we're looking at a minimum price point of 850,000, minimum square footage of 3,500, and the majority of the exterior would be brick. So a lot of the aesthetics and and all of those requirements would be outlined in our HOA documents. Then, of course, we would present all of those to you guys during the construction documents phase as well. So our intention would be to, as soon as we get approval on the site plan, and once we go through construction docs phase with you guys as well, we would build the road and immediately start on the road. We do plan on building on the five acre estate lots and the remaining lots would be a for sale, bring your own custom builder type scenario. So everything would be outlined in the HOA to make sure that we meet those price point requirements, square footage requirements, et cetera. So we would stub all of the utilities to each lot as well. And and then that's when we would start essentially, I think lot uh 23 has the existing Brantley House, which is staying as well, that's being renovated. Uh, and then lot 22 and lot 21 would be built on assuming we get permit approvals on those construction docks. And that's all I have.
Well, I'll just start by saying this is a dramatic change and I am just, I was kind of pleasantly shocked that how you took almost every single one of our comments and tried to, you know, compromise and accommodate. And I think it looks great, I mean, I think it looks great from initial look.
Thank you.
So thank you for listening. We appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll second that, and I think that the concept, you know, you came in, you were like, we are, and having grown up in this area, we've had a lot of people that are like, we're Marvin too, like, we're part of Union County, like, we're, we're, like, we're your neighbors. But um to Kelly's point, when you take the time to reconsider and to move things around to help those of us that are living here and will be your neighbors to feel better about developing, you know, getting darn close to the last big parcels of land left in Marvin, it's um, it's a testament to that neighborly feeling, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. No, so it'll be a bring your own builder, custom builder scenario. We are going to build on the five acre estate lots ourselves. I'm, I'm renovating. I'm renovating the existing Brantley House and that's where my family and I will live. Yeah, we're excited. Yeah, very much. Yeah, exactly. No, we're. Um, so that's kind of up in the air right now. So I know that the um kind of the comparable lots in the area are anywhere from 300 to 375 ish area. As soon as we get through approvals, we we probably will start a waiting list, yeah, correct. We do, yeah, quite a bit, yeah, absolutely.
So um, yeah, just so we can stay on time with the training, uh, once again, just wanted to get you guys this updated site plan. My memos in there as well, my, I'll have my full analysis done, I mean, it's pretty much, not much has changed, like, but just so you guys can see compliance of X, Y, I mean, all these sections, that will be in your guys' packet as well. But the plan is, is that per ordinance, basically, they, we've had 60 days and that will be at the December meeting. If we feel based on, I mean, one, it seems like good feedback tonight, but once we get through the compliance report and kind of the full presentation at the December meeting, you guys can make your recommendation to council, uh, and then that will be on council's agenda i- if so, at their January meeting.
Correct. Is there a plant?
So. One thing that was discussed is that, yes, the during the PIM is actually Derek, he was here as a staff and as a resident, but potentially their sidewalk and then having a trail or kind of a greenway trail put in a common open space where then it would kind of connect, I mean, there are some multiple options, but they, they, the applicant has been receptive to exploring that or at least looking at doing the connection through the common open space, their sidewalk, and then connecting it to the estates of Marvin Branch Greenway. So then you will kind of have that full connectivity to then potentially futurely tie in to go into Mecklenburg County and that greenway.
This is the wrong board, you need to go to Parks and Rec.
No, I get it, I get it. So the only other thing that I'd like to mention about this, and I think this comes up every time we look at houses and we look at the long-term impact of any development, is given where we live and given the amazing school district of Marvin, and so you mentioned families, so I don't know how old your, your children are, but chances are that's a pull to this area.
Yep.
Same, so I know that the numbers nationwide are the 41%, right, that they will bring children, et cetera, but I think just collectively, and I appreciate that you put the numbers in here, you, you've thought about that, the impact of the school district, I think that we all just need to be cognizant of the fact that the numbers are higher here substantially than what they are in other areas.
Right.
Right, and that we need to be mindful, and so I know that it's up to the school boards, et cetera, but we, our schools are at capacity, right, and well, two out of the three, right, are at capacity, and so I think we just need to be mindful of that and realize that regardless of what the national data says of the statistics of people moving to the area, that realistically we are going to see, my guess is more than nine kids hop on the bus in that neighborhood.
Yep.
So I think that that's just something that I appreciate, that that you've presented data here, and I appreciate that, and I don't believe that the data is reflective of our area, which is the same reason that we've also chosen to raise our children here. So just for the sake of arguments, we're all aware, I think that we're likely to see more impact.
So with that being said, Brendan, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
We said we'll really discuss this in depth in December, and once again, I wanted you guys to have all the information in your packets. I encourage you guys to review slash, I mean, if there's any questions, any suggestions or any of that, please reach out to me between now and the December meeting so we can just try to be efficient and make sure that when we discuss it, when, I mean, you guys have seen it now a couple of times, but then potentially I can go ahead and relay any other suggestions, recommendations or concerns to the applicant.
All right, planners update.
I got nothing right now.
Hunter, I've already got the PowerPoint pulled up for the training, so you can, you can share that screen with the WebEx whenever you're ready. And you can rotate my camera to see some of our council members. There they are.
We're good, Austin, we don't need, you don't need to see us.
I always need to see you, Kim. Lastly, just remember, guys, if you're, if you're moving, seconding or voting, just have your microphones on.
Hey, Austin, one thing I just thought of, of when they're doing the presentation, what are we going to do about mics?
Um, someone needs to advance the slides and then whoever's presenting should sit down at a mic.
Perfect. So do you need any council to open up there?
Um, yeah, both boards need to call the joint meeting to order now.
Are we, do you not have a planners update? Oh, okay, well, then join to close this meeting first before we can open the next. Austin, I need to close our, our planning meeting, correct, before we can open up?
You actually, you actually don't, uh, this, this was on the books as a joint meeting, so you can keep this one open and just until we completely finished.
Okay.
So you can just kind of open up the joint meeting now and then you just close everything at once whenever we finish.
Does the mayor also, does the mayor need to open his? All right.
So I'd like to open the, those are Marvin Planning Board Training, November 15, 2022. I show the time at 6:07 and I show we have two people shy, Wayne and Jamie. So, but we do have a full form. Or, I mean, we do have a form. And like a motion to adopt the agenda is presented.
So moved.
All's in favor? Motion passes. We good, Austin?
You're good.
All right, thank you.
Are you ready?
Uh, I think it's okay. He was not, he was planning on not being here.
This weekend is my parent's weekend.
Can you not hear me? I don't know why.
He goes all week.
Today's my children's birthday, so.
So it seemed like there was a voice coming from the box.
I'm not very good.
But I can't be a person, are there people online?
No.
They're asleep.
Okay.
Just Austin.
Just your friendly neighborhood clerk.
That is interesting. Hey, everybody, I'm Michelle Nance, I'm the planning director at Central Alina Regional Council, and it is a pleasure to be here with you this evening to talk about planning board roles and responsibilities and to go over a few processes that you have been operating under, just saw most of your meeting, and also to go over some things that maybe y'all aren't doing now, but you might in the future, such as some quasi judicial decision making, so we will touch on that as well. And I'd like to, I'm going to start us off, but I've got two of my colleagues here, Luke Lowry and Reagan Murphy, and Luke will be doing some of the presentation tonight. So let's see. So, let's see, how do we advance the slides? Okay. Is there a? Let's see, if you wanna give me, I will, I'll be glad to do it if you wanna just. Okay, I need it closer. I'm short.
Hunter, someone might need to stand next to it in advance, unfortunately. Our, we can just get our AV system in. We won't have to deal with this. Oh wait, it's working.
Yeah, so that you can just stop right there. Um, so we're gonna, just so you know, we're gonna take a break mid-training. But obviously, this is, this is your home away from home, right? So we were signed up for a four-hour meeting. No, I'm just kidding. Um, feel free to take a break when you need to, okay? Uh, but we will be doing a break midway through. I also wanted to know, when I do presentations, I like to have pretty slides and lots of pictures and no text. But this presentation is a little bit different. And the reason why is because I want you to be able to use these slides as a resource later on. So I just wanted to preface that to say they're, they're a little bit text-heavy, but that's by design, okay? So they can use those later. Um, also, I just wanted to say thank you for your service to the community. Planning Commission especially, and, and council too. But Planning Commission especially is sometimes a thankless job and you put in a lot of time and effort. Uh, so I just wanted to say thank you uh, for everything you do for your community. I'm the chair of the Planning Commission in my own community, and it's hard. It's really a hard job because you are the liaison between the public and the government. And you know the people in your community, which makes it difficult when you go to the grocery store, right? Um, so anyway, just wanted to say thank you. Um, next slide. So these are a few of the things that we're gonna be talking about tonight. Um, I mentioned roles and responsibilities, the different types of decision-making that you will do. Uh, we'll talk about development process and roles, setting the context for uh, your decision-making. We'll take a break. Then we'll talk a little bit more about some of the operate, planning board operations. And then board of adjustment. And when I say board of adjustment, really it's gonna be more about quasi judicial decisions. The board of adjustment may be doing some of these things now, but council and potentially planning, uh, the planning board could be doing those types of decisions at some point in the future. And then we'll wrap up. Okay, next slide. So before we get into that, um, I think I know the answer to this, but for the folks that are on the planning board, let me see your hands. Okay, and then council over here. Um, now, how many of you on, doesn't matter either board, have been on the board for more than five years? Okay. Okay. In between hockey games. How about those folks that have been on a board for less than a year? Okay. And has anyone served on the board of adjustment? Okay, alright, good. That just helps me kinda read the room. Alright, so let's go to the next slide. So just in thinking about who you are and what you do for the community, you know, you're civic-minded residents appointed to be the caretakers of the development process. And you're tasked with creating uh, communities with lasting value, and that means in terms of jobs and, and housing. And I, I, I know in Marvin, it's, it's mostly about residential. But you do have a district that, that has some mixed use in there as well. And so I know that's important to you, um, having some services nearby. And you've got beautiful recreational amenities here that you want to be the caretaker of and, and make sure that those amenities grow as the population grows. And, you know, wh- why do, why does a community have a planning board with resident members? I mentioned before, you're, you are kind of that middle point, that liaison between the, the community and the governing board. And how do you serve? You play a very important role in a much bigger development process. Um, and we'll go through a little bit of the details of that um, in just a second. Alright, next slide. So a little bit about your duties. You know, if you've had a chance, especially for the new folks, you know, to take a look at the, the ordinance, and it outlines some of this. Um, and these are, these are the statutory uh, given roles of the planning board. And so you may do some of these, you may do some of these more than others. Um, but, you know, creating your own community plan or small area plan, ongoing research, and I heard you talking a little bit about schools tonight. You know, so sometimes there'll be some issues like that that come to the forefront that you wanna dig into. Um, and you can just talk to your staff and, and they will make sure that that happens either, either by them doing or get, or getting a consultant to do it. Every community, every community has, um, you know, very specific issues that they might need to dig into. And the planning board's kind of at the, at the heart of that. Um, coordinating public engagement. So not necessarily on a rezoning, but if you do a planning process, as the liaisons, you've got the contacts in the community. So whether it's your Rotary Club or, you know, your book club or PTA, uh, PTO, uh, you're kind of that, that connection. And then uh, recommending the policies, ordinances, and procedures to carry out the plans, which I saw you do that in action just a few minutes ago. Alright, next. Okay, yeah. Um, so the, a big part of the role is obviously advising the governing board on the implementation of plans and also your text amendments and map amendments. And I love this one, other duties as assigned, you know, it's just um, has, has issues come up?
When you say next slide, I've got Austin now doing it.
Okay.
So when you just say next slide, you should be able to switch it for you.
Okay, next. Nice. Okay, let's go ahead. Let's go ahead and go to the next one. I wish I knew where Austin was.
I'm all the way in Durham.
So there are four types of decisions that we'll talk a little bit about. Administrative, legislative, quasi judicial, and advisory. And so go ahead and let's go to the next slide so we can move through these kind of quickly. Administrative decisions are typically those decisions made by your, your staff. And the reason the, the reason these decision types are important is because sometimes there's different processes for each one. Uh, different ways you can talk about a case, different ways you can engage with the community about a case. So I'd like for you to start thinking about these four areas when you have a case in front of you. When it comes to you to make a decision, think about which, which one, which, which role am I playing at this point? And so you, the administrative decisions uh, staff makes kind of day-to-day. You know, as they're working with the developer, they are um, interpreting the ordinance and talking with the development community, community about what goes on. And, you know, they'll issue a, a certificate of zoning compliance uh, so that a developer can take that to the county to get their building permit. Um, and so those things happen day-to-day kind of without y'all having a lot of interaction with, with, with that. Alright, next slide. The legislative decision, um, those are typically set aside for council. And that's really setting the general policies uh, for the, for the village. Um, legislative decisions are when a plan is adopted, when the ordinance is adopted, or plans or ordinances or are amended, setting the town budget or village budget, um, and then making appointments to other bodies. Those decisions require public notice and the, the hearings are typically involved and there's a, usually a lot of public discussion and deliberation. So the community is invited um, to have an opinion about these topics, and I'm sure they do have opinions. Here in Marvin. Okay, next slide. Quasi judicial. These are decisions that are made likely primarily by the board of adjustment. The council may, if you, if the council does special use permits, you probably operate in this quasi judicial area. Um, some, but some key points about that is there are findings of fact that have to be met. And make sure that when you're doing those, that you kind of dive in and understand whose responsibility is it to provide these facts? And where is that burdened proof? And we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get into the quasi judicial um, process. But those are just things to keep in mind. It's a very strict procedural process. You kind of need to act like you're acting as a court. And so there's some real specific rules about talking about the case outside of the meeting and, and not talking about the case outside of the meeting. And um, again, it's zoning appeals, variances, and special use permits. You're kind of the key categories of those decisions. And so again, this is just a light touch. We'll go into this in more detail, in more detail a little bit later. Okay, next slide. Last but not least is the advisory decisions, and those, those pretty much sit with the planning board, okay? So some examples are doing what you did tonight, looking at development proposals, drafting the plans, and zoning text amendments, and reviewing amendments that might be mandated by the state. That is, that is your key role, okay? Alright, next slide. This table really just shows you how it all comes, kind of comes together. From the village council to planning board, board adjustment staff, what types of decisions they're making and some examples of each of those. Alright, next slide. Alright, next. Alright, so this is a quick snapshot of the major milestones in the development process. Those things that are in green are really what staff is doing. The orange is where the boards come into play, whether it's the number seven, the advisory board, or nine, the governing board. If it's in blue, that's the developer and applicant's role. And then in gray, that's where the public comes in. And often you're gonna see, click the slide one whole time. Yeah, so a lot of times steps one through five will go on and on and on and on several times before. Um, and that's okay. And that, that's okay. Um, just like tonight, y'all saw it looked like a development proposal you had probably seen before. You made some comments on it. They made some changes. And so that process can swirl a little bit before it actually comes to fruition. Is there anything that y'all noticed when you look at this development process? Anything that comes to mind? It's hip on administration. Um, there's one. Yeah, number nine. So a lot, a lot happens before it even gets to you. And then a lot happens after it leaves, right? Now, I know sometimes planning boards will get a little nervous because they will, let's say they approve something. And then the site plan changes before it gets to the count, for the council. And that makes planning boards nervous sometimes because it's like, well, that's not what we voted on. And so I just wanted to assure everybody, this actually can be a good thing. Maybe they listened to the public engagement that happened at the public hearing in front of the planning board. Um, you know, so that's, it's okay. Um, the, the goal is to have continuous improvement on that plan all the way through. So, anyway, we'll say after it goes to the board, then we go to permitting and inspections. Some of that's done here. Some of that's done by the county. Um, so it, it's quite a process and it, you know, kudos to your staff for kind of, for administering it and making sure it gets to where it needs to go. Alright, next slide. Alright, we're gonna talk a little bit about the state and local legislation, and then I'll, Luke, if you wanna go ahead and turn up. And if you just wanna sit up here.
Since.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna just kind of go back and forth a little bit on on some of that.
Hey, everyone. Um, my name's Luke, just to remind you again, um, we're definitely gonna keep this a little informal, hopefully for those of you who have been here for a while. A lot of this is review. But uh, for those who are new, um, this is just great information to see what are the resources you have um, to help inform decision-making. Uh, the first, uh, list the context for how uh, you all operate. How are local planning laws made? And really, there's two ways. One is through NC General Assembly. So they really are um, who enable local governments to um, perform certain responsibilities and duties. Um, for those who have been on the board for longer than about two years, you might have seen that local government statutes are in two separate places. Uh, general statutes one fifty-three A and one sixty A. For recently, they were consolidated into one sixty D, which houses all of the um, statutes for how local governments can operate. And a lot of communities had to update their local land use plans in accordance with that recently. I'm not sure, did y'all um, update your land use plan for one sixty? Okay, it's gonna be the deadline for that. Perfect. So you'll also see that the second part is local legislation. So um, there are some instances in which um, from the state level, there will be special legislation um, for local governments, but that will kind of add on to the requirements found in statewide statutes. But for the most part, uh, local ordinance codes and regulations are really what dictate how local governments operate. Um, and then as well, there's local plans, but these are really for reference. And as I'm sure you all are aware, um, the plans that you all have are really to guide decision-making, but they don't have the same legal binding as ordinances do. Next. So this is just where you can actually find the general statutes. Um, and another resource which I don't have on the slide, but I think is a really great resource to learn about how state statutes um, interact with local decision-making is UNC School of Government. Um, you might have heard the name Adam Lovelady. He's the wizard on all things uh, land use planning. And they have a great blog called Coats Canon, which has a ton of great articles about issues that y'all would face regularly. So I definitely encourage you to, to dive into that and read into that. Next slide. Okay, so now we're gonna get into a little bit of uh, what are the actual plans, ordinances, and policies at play. Um, so the primary guiding vision for your community is the land use plan. Uh, this really sets the development tone for the community. Um, and it's the reference document that you, the governing body, developers um, will use to see where the community wants to grow. Um, and is what you will use to reference the um, the decisions that you make. Um, so really some of the questions that the land use plan helps answer is, you know, what do we want to preserve? What do we want to enhance? What do we want to transition? And where do we want to transform? Um, next slide. So you'll see here um, that the land use plan is comprised of both text and a map. Um, and in addition to the land use plan, which is the overall guiding vision, your community has other plans which interact under this umbrella of the land use plan. So these are two that I pulled from the website, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and the twenty nineteen Community Survey Report. But really, all your plans should work together in unison under this umbrella of the land use plan. So just realize that you don't just have the land use plan to use as a reference. You have other plans which you can also use to help inform and guide decision-making. Next slide. Additionally, there's always small area plans. Sometimes you want Additionally, there's always small area plans. Sometimes you want to know very specific things about very specific areas of your community. Um, and for example, I pulled the Marvin Heritage District Small Area Plan. This is just an example that sometimes the, you know, land use plan itself is a little bit too broad to answer the specific questions you might have. And so small area plans or corridor plans are a great way to address more specific questions. Next slide. And then you can get really fun with plans. Um, these are just some examples of very uh more specific technical plans that you could produce. Um, up in the top left corner-esque graphic showing taxable value per acre. So you might want to know where are we having the highest return on investment with the types of development we have in the town? Or what are the types of development that we could really see adding um the most to our revenue as a community? Or maybe you want to know about um congestion and traffic patterns from people who are leaving and coming to the community. So those are just examples of creative ways that you, you all can recommend um different types of studies. Next slide. So now we can enter zoning. So um, you know, we talked about the land use plan, which is really the overall vision for the community. And zoning is the tool that you use to implement that vision. So zoning regulates land use. And from the statutes, um, you'll see that um purpose is said to promote health, safety morals, or the general welfare of the community. Um, and some different examples, what zoning has meant to regulate or restrict is um, you know, height. Lot size, open space and use. So really it's looking at where and how um are we trying to develop? Um, and as I said, it complements the comprehensive plan, these work in tandem. As you know, you need to use the land use plan, plan as a reference for any kind of zoning amendments. Next slide. So this is um. Basically, I think this was getting into basically um the zoning ordinance itself. Um, so I don't have that written up there, but the zoning ordinance is where you'll actually find the rules about zoning. There are some general standards that will apply to all um zoning districts. But then there are definitely specific standards that apply to certain districts. And these are just some of the types of information that is housed in zoning ordinances. Next slide. So this is a typical um kind of example of what zoning looks like. But obviously, each community needs to tailor zoning to their specific context. In the case of Marvin, in every community, these aren't all going to apply. So if you have the next slide. You'll see the zoning district types that I pulled from the zoning map, and hopefully that's, that's all accurate. Um, you can see that it's, it's very specific to the needs of your community. Um, you know, you don't see industrial and agricultural here, but you do see that there are um still ways to have nuance. And especially in the heritage district, which is conditional zoning, as, as we'll talk about in a little bit. Uh, next slide. So again, this is um showing where the ordinance, you can figure out about zoning district uses. Um, so the ordinance will um outline what uses are allowed in each zone. Um, and again, this is kind of alluding to the different types of zoning that are available to you. But some uses are permitted by right, whereas other uses, you know, there are some extra incentive regulations. Or you'll have to go through a special use, use permit process. There also can be non-conforming uses. I'm not sure how often that is the case in your community. But there are uses historically that don't fit with uh the current zoning ordinance. It may be that they're allowed to exist, but as a non-conforming use. Excellent. Yep.
I'll sing about it.
Where did the term by right come from? And how is it overall perceived? Is it, is it what, did it start with, this is my land? And I can do whatever I want with it? Is that what, where by right came from?
By right basically means that in, you know, conventional zoning. And again, I don't know the, the history of the term, but basically there are minimum standards that are laid out. But as long as you as a property owner, owner meets those minimum standards, there's really no additional. Um, regulations that can be placed on the property owner as long as they're meeting the minimum standards.
But the standards are set by the government entity, entity, right?
Exactly. And that's where the combination of state regulations and then local ordinance would come into play. But then, as we will talk about with different zoning types, you can add that extra layer. Of there are these minimum standards, but you also need to meet additional steps. So it's a little bit more restrictive.
That's, we did that. Yeah, we did that specifically in the Formas Code um for a lot of those uses. In the process of now of updating the zoning warrant and stuff like, for example, with that excess, what we just were discussing with the uh, the church and the accessory use and stuff. Like it has those supplemental regulations, like it can go one or two ways and it's kind of up to the council, even the planning board on their recommendation on how it must go. You can either put them in and as long as they fit and they're reasonable and stuff, there's the supplemental regulations that the applicant must comply with. For them to just get a zoning permit, but then never come to planning board or council unless, I mean, obviously it's a rezoning. Or those regulations can be put in as special requirements with, with a grant uh with the additional requirement of the granting of a special use permit. And basically, it's, they meet those requirements, but then council as from a quasi additional standpoint is the one that's deciding if they meet those special requirements or not.
That's the whole thing with, um, again, if we go ahead and go to the next slide, we can clarify this a little bit. No, no, it's, it's good, but it's transitioning well into, into this. So conventional districts, um, again, you see that language by right or with a special use permit. Um, so basically, as we said, there are different uses that are allowed in zoning districts. And conventional districts are that kind of lowest level of minimum standards. So some uses are by right. So in that case, as long as the property owner is meeting the minimum standards, there really isn't additional legislative. Pro or denial that can take place. They have the right. Um, so that's why other forms of zoning are often used. But in the case of the special use permit, sometimes there are uses that are allowed. But they need to be proven to meet um additional regulations that are put in place. And that's when the special use permit process will happen. And that's why a lot of communities have switched to using conditional zoning, because you get that extra layer of control. So.
Remember if you're speaking or asking a question to turn your mics on, because it doesn't pick it up otherwise.
Um, do, do we, um, for by right, does it go just to administrate? Like, can you approve it as, as the administrator, as the planner? Or does it actually still go through planning board kind of as like a FYI and?
Per ordinance it depends. So if the structure is existing and there, you know, because we have the DRB, which is a whole nother thing I'll get to eventually. But if the structure exists and let's, like, for example, post office, I think is a permitted use in residential district. And let's say a post office wanted to go into Old Village Hall. Then yes, they would be able to just do a change in use because the structure exists, the post offices are permitted, by right use, nothing ever comes to you guys. And if a new structure is being built, that's where per ordinance, the DRB, like, the use itself is permitted. You can't deny the use. But if they're building a new structure, yes, we have setbacks and, but from a design standpoint, that's where it would ever come to you guys.
And uh, let me just add that if a council member uh does not like what is included by right in the zoning district. Your best force of action is to change the zoning code instead of trying to fight against that by right. And take things to Boards of Adjustment or anything like that. You, the, the village has the opportunity to change the code, make it like you want it. It needs to be tweaked from time to time. There will be something out of the blue that you didn't think about. Oh, my goodness, we should have said no to that. Make sure that's in the ordinance. So you just need to adjust the ordinance.
And to bring it up one level higher, that's really the importance of the interplay with the future land use plan and the actual zoning ordinances. The whole purpose of that is to predict the type of uses you want. So that you can proactively adjust zoning. So that you're not having to retroactively try to adjust it if you're seeing that there are uh uses. Or forms that you aren't comfortable with. So, so really important to have that kind of proactive lens.
Ask one more question about this, and this is, this is just a general. If there is an ordinance that hasn't been updated in a long time and there's a loophole or there's something that a neighbor is taking advantage of. That, you know, other neighbors are like, hmm, how is it even possible that they're doing this? Um, we did have a, um, we did have a resident come and propose a text amendment change. You know, to us and we, we acted on it. Um, but is, is that like a normal, like, what do residents have as members of the community? To tighten and help tighten up ordinances, bring things, you know, to the light? You know, can you just talk about that just for a second?
I want you to that, just to say specifically for your community.
Um, and I'm not sure, to be honest, I haven't really looked at your presentation, so you might get into the amendment process. But from a text amendment standpoint, to initiate or, or to, like you were saying, if it's, if the public or somebody from like a resident wants to initiate change. Then that process is in place. It's kind of like with the, the women's center, like, they file a text amendment. Per our ordinance, per state statutes, it has to go through the process and be considered. When it comes to that point to being considered from a, from a text amendment standpoint, especially from a use. And that's where council does make that decision as a legislative body uh to either approve or deny the text amendment. And that's where also that land use plan does come into play is, is this use consistent with the goals, recommendations? Is this use consistent or whatever the text amendment change, if it's a use specific change? Is it consistent to how it's going to, because with text, you're, you're looking at how it's going to apply to Marvin as a whole. And especially since we're ninety percent, ninety-five percent zone Marvin residential and in the land use plan identified as residential. That's what you have to think about. And that's one thing I think I've mentioned to both planning board and council of updating, amending our future land use map. And even that's how we got on the topic of the civic district and stuff, because the way we did it, um. It's all broken into that residential district and even as residential zoning to an extent on the future land use map. So it can be a good or bad thing, however you look at it.
That's what we're doing uh with this women's center thing, uh, you know, uh, proposal. Uh, and you're actually updating ordinances, I believe, aren't you? To bring them over to today's language instead of the old language where.
Yeah, because from a staff level, I mean, if they propose this text amendment like that one, like. They're, I understand their intent and my goal is from a staff level is now to make their intent actually flow with our ordinance and make sense. Because like, that's what kind of drew that whole conversation last, last month was nonprofit. How do you define nonprofit as a use? Well, that's what, that was by recommendation and kind of here's how we do that. And, and, and still, it's working on still achieving what they're, what they submitted in their application. And if they're okay with those changes as well as then, um, it's achieving, once again, since it's going to be codified and in our ordinance potentially. Making sure it flows and everything's consistent.
But you're also making the language more simpler and definitive.
Yeah.
These are great questions. Thanks. Uh, let's go to the next slide. So the next zoning district, which, you know, as you were saying, how do you get that extra layer of control? Um, is a conditional district. And this is where a site plan or an individualized development conditions are imposed. Um, so in this case, in order for a conditional district to, to come to be, property owners must agree um to petition. Other conditions are agreed to in writing. Uh, the conditions are related to conformance with plans, ordinances or reasonable impacts of the use. But there are less conditions on taxes and impact fees. Um, and with conditional zoning, um, there are some limits. And it was kind of alluded to there, but on design, um, but what you really can get into with conditional zoning. Um, is height, bulk, orientation or location of the structures on the lot. Buffering or screening and of course permitted uses. So there's a lot of control that you can have during the conditional um use process. And especially with the heritage district, I believe it's form based code as well, which we're not going to dive into specifically. But even more so, that's a way to get really specific and clear. Um, guidance on what kinds of not only uses, but forms of buildings to have. So this is a really powerful tool in the arsenal. Uh, next slide.
Is there a difference between ICD and just a CD?
Yes, so when we established the heritage district, we did it as a conditional district. So we already had, we went ahead and established what the regulations are, what the, like, all that stuff through the Formas Code. ICDs are individual conditional zoning districts, meaning that we, we actually took this part out of our zoning ordinance, I think, back in like twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, after Marvin Gardens. But there was a process in place that allowed for the property owner to petition to be its own individual conditional zoning district. So it's basically just creating its own set of standards, regulations and everything. It's like what Marvin Gardens is, Amber Meadows and Courtyards. So they're both still, still conditional zoning. But the ICDs, all three of those have their own set of conditions or own set of regulations. Like Amber Meadows and Courtyards have small lots, five foot set, five foot side setbacks. I think it's like twenty on the front, twenty on the, I mean. But all of that was derived from what they submitted and then what was approved. So that's what they adhere by.
So they had to apply for an ICD and then, then council had to approve whatever conditions they set.
Yeah, it's still, it's a still similar process of what we went through with the heritage conditional zoning. It's, but where the heritage conditional zoning, once again, since we have the language there, that's kind of what their submission was. They could have offered to potentially try to, uh, for example, like the accessory structure, like basically have a, um. I'm thinking on the deviation from the actual regulations. Uh, but so we, with Marvin Gardens, Marvin Gardens is an ICD, they have their own set of regulations like that fit. And it was all kind of derived through communication meetings with council, planning board, and I know that went on forever, but.
I'm glad we don't have ICDs.
So and then I'm pretty sure after the whole Marvin Gardens thing, the council decided we, we removed basically allowing individual conditional zoning as a, um, as an opportunity to apply for.
How, how did that Marvin Gardens go on? I remember, you know, some of it back, uh, was it five years?
To my knowledge, I'm pretty sure it started back in like two thousand six, two thousand seven with Harris Teeter before then Regency slash Publix got involved.
I mean, it, it sounds like it's very heavy on administrative and it actually ends up costing in terms of personnel hours. An enormous amount on, on Marvin. Yeah. It was that taken into consideration, was that?
Here for, for those three, um, and once, and once again, like. Yeah, I mean, yes, it could. It just kind of depends on what they propose. I mean, conditional zoning districts in general intends to provide some flexibility, but at the same time still have that control.
And to, to your point with the administrative time, a huge benefit of form based codes is you give the developers a very clear sense upfront of. This is the form and the conditions that we would like. And it can really quicken that process because there's not as much back and forth as a little bit more proactive in putting out. This is the form that we would like to see.
That's, I think I've always explained to you guys, like, the way the heritage district or the form base code to an extent, or the heritage. or the heritage district as a conditional zoning, it's set up similar to what Marvin Gardens is. It's just Marvin Gardens was done on the, like, through the process of getting to the language, we went ahead and created the language and, and what we expect.
Rest of my memory, it's your form base code. Request certain material use on buildings without going against the state's statute.
So I believe building materials are as part of conditional zoning. I don't know the degree to which, but that is definitely allowed because it's to the quality of the building. It's really specific design, especially like interior design aesthetics that you cannot regulate.
Why we did it.
Top of the, the form base code zoning.
Correct. Yeah. Cause what, what really stands for that heritage district specifically before, when it was kind of proposed before I started last year, part of it was it was going to be done as a conventional district. It was all going to be resolved at once. But then the, the whole control of a residential design aesthetics, like you don't have that legally, we cannot force that, and especially at a conventional and by right type of use. With conditional zoning, it's kind of a gray area, but yes, like as in, like we put those standards and those, those designs in the form base code of what we expect. And then that's kind of what, you know, if they, for the subdivision and stuff like, that's what they're trying to meet. And I mean, luckily we've had, we've had one applicant that met that. So, um, you know, if you have a future one, like, and then you kind of use that as like, okay, this is once again, you kind of build off of what's here. Cause that's kind of the goal is to make this whole district be looking similar in character.
Perfect. Alright, so we're going to go quick here. Um, I don't believe this applies to you all, but there are overlay districts. And these would basically be an additional layer of zoning or a regulation that would go on top of whatever the base district is. So you see it a lot in historic districts where there's an additional set of rules that would apply to whatever falls in that overlay district. Next slide. And then again, floating district is just another tool in the arsenal. Not as relevant, it's not as often used. Plan unit development districts are very common use in North Carolina, but especially in small towns, it's, it's not used as often. It speaks to the diversity of zoning tools that there are. Next slide. So then the next layer is subdivision regulation. And as you can see, it's really about, uh, rules for dividing property. You can see the, the formal definition here. Um, there are some exemptions, so not every time that you're dividing property isn't going to, uh, technically qualifies as a subdivision. So those are there, but by the time it comes to you, it will already have, you know, met those requirements. So that's not as important to know. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So there's different types of subdivision regulations. There's typically major or minor. I did senior ordinance. There's rural subdivisions, not.
At least from the process standpoint.
Yeah. So just to know that there are different types and uh, really the key with understanding that there are different types is use a planning board will have different roles um, as to what you review and when you review it. So for a major subdivision, uh, you're going to have a bigger role than a minor subdivision, which is going to have a heavier emphasis on administrative work since there aren't as many factors to be considered. But really the importance of subdivision regulation is, is many different things. But there's, you know, tax implications, really speaks to how neighborhoods are designed, um, and how they look. And, you know, the dedication of street right of ways of open space. Uh, so this is a, maybe not as often understood, uh, as zoning, but it's equally important and, and how the community actually looks. And the next slide. So this is a general process. And again, for the, the different types of subdivision uh, processes, it's going to look a little bit different. But these are generally the four stages. Developer will submit a sketch plan, which is reviewed and this is not as detailed. It's, it's very, um, you know, early on in the process, but gives a very good sense of what they're going for. Um, and so for a major subdivision process, you all would have, I believe, in a advisory role and as early on as the sketch plan. And then once that is approved, it would go onto a site plan, which starts to get into more specific details. And then on approval of that, we go to construction inspection and finally the final plan. But again, the key to know here is just understand which type it is and what your role will be in it, which will vary. Next slide. So unified development ordinance is really a document that brings, um, you know, zoning ordinance, other types of ordinances all together. And if you forget from our conversation, did you say that you all are aiming towards UDO eventually or?
Yeah, just, I mean, you guys have heard, all of you have probably heard me say it at least once or twice how our ordinances are all over the place. And I'm trying to do as much from the staff level, but it's kind of gotten, well, yeah, like looking at doing a full kind of rewrite, taking some of the intent so we can fully clarify. And getting to a UDO, I know, you know, Weddington's recently done this. I mean, it's, once again, it's kind of all the regulations there, it's updating regulations. I mean, we did that with 160D, but at the same time, it's updating them to be with today's terminology. Um, a great example that I've always been told is like vape shops. Vape shops weren't a thing five, 10 years ago. Now they are. So it's like, it's kind of being, it's really kind of updating it with now the terminology, having those definitions and, and kind of a, it's easier to find things compared to our ordinance.
So is it, is it more like a, um, almost like a brochure type of thing? I mean, more specific obviously, but I mean, our ordinances are this huge binder, which, you know, we all get. I'm not sure how, how much of us are doing it. You're doing the weekend reading in the old, in the old clips, but, um, is this more of just a user friendly, kind of like quick and easy? It gives you an idea, but if you want to dig into it, you really do need to go and reference the.
It's, I wouldn't say it's quick and easy. The idea, the idea is for your development ordinances to be in one package. So instead of having to go look at the stormwater ordinance and go over here and look at the floodplain ordinance and go over here and look at the zoning and the subdivision, they're kind of all in one document. It's typically more easier to read.
Yeah. Cause of codiffs from a codified, because our, our zoning, we have our land use chapter consists of subdivision, what, uh, zoning and, um, I think it might be floodplain. But a good example is then our tree chapter, which is referenced a lot in our subdivision and even zoning ordinance is in a, is just in a different chapter, different even like subsection of our ordinance, of our regular code ordinances. So a UDO would help put all those in place, but at the same time, like, yeah, they're, they are typically to read. I mean, luckily we changed who we codify with, so it looks better. From an aesthetic standpoint, if you go look at the old one, it's not always fun to look at. The other thing most municipalities do is sometimes their zoning ordinance is an appendix to their code ordinances. So then it's a standalone document and it's not have to be codified. And that's one way um, it allows for that flexibility and kind of like what it looks like and, and, and so on, like it's just ours. There's a codified section within our current code ordinances. So we're kind of, I mean, from like a design standpoint of how our ordinance can look, we're kind of.
So would the purpose of this or would the audience be a developer? A potential homeowner, like home builder?
Really everyone. Um, yeah. In that process of consolidation, it helps you all and a developer just more quickly know where to go. So it's really and or. Uh, next slide. So getting into kind of the, the last parts of what you would see and basically, um, development approvals, you have permits. So zoning permits are what is issued by the municipality. And it's kind of the first stage before you get into the actual building process. And a building permit is issued, which is typically from the county. And this is really the, the final proof that developer is in compliance with all local regulations. And this is, um, really an administrative, um, process. So hopefully by the point in time that it comes to this, you all have wrapped it up and have it out of mind. Uh, next slide.
Yeah. Hang on a second. Is there any plans for making the permits available to fill out online? Or is that, that's not available now, is it?
Well, we are, our zoning permits are available on our website.
But as far as filling them out and submitting them online?
I've updated them to be PDF fillable.
Right.
So, but no, we're, there's, we're going through a software change. It does kind of allow this, but at the same time, we had a demo actually on Monday and it's not what we were hoping from an extent to, like, it's not going to save anybody anytime.
There's a lot of people you all will have to read their handwriting, I'm sure. And you'd rather have it filled out.
Much rather, trust me, I get permits that it's very hard. And there's times where I'll get them and I'll still go to the fillable and redo it. So then when we document it, at least I have like a clear thing. But, um, yeah, I mean, we have them online and they're fillable. My next step is we have like 15 different permit applications. So I'm going to try to.
And then you haven't paid them, paid for the permitting applications online as well and streamline, streamline.
Next slide. Oh, yep. So then the final part is just inspections. This is a county role, which I'm assuming is a county role for you all. And this happens with new constructions or additions. Uh, next slide. So that's it. We're going to take a 10 minute break. Um, and then we'll resume at 7:10.
Are y'all good to take a break? No one to take a break?
I don't need to breathe.
Yeah. Well, we can check in like five minutes, but we'll, we'll resume.
But that's like, I live here. I could go this way, you can go this way, or you can go this way.
Yeah.
So I was, I ended up going.
Yeah.
And, but then when I came down, I saw like, I think it's like Tom, Tom Hall Road, like that's four mil, like that's a two mil road.
Yeah. That's why I was, I had to like go to Independence to Matthews and swing back to 45 and.
To be honest, if you really look at all this.
Yeah.
As soon as he showed up.
What kind of baby?
I want to know my shit like fire. Them HD commit egg as in like one, yes, like they want to give you a travel, that could be a recommendation.
Yeah.
Does that give?
I mean, I know all this, it's, there's.
Think that's what they think about. Cause that's especially going through the process, that's one thing that they can kind of get.
Still was.
What they can, they can make it slash. But I still have that in there. I don't know how it died, but.
We can like speak to that really with the, the areas of decision making. In light.
Alright, sir. Good. Kim, how are you?
The weather finally changed.
And I know, I'm like, I love, I love the sweater weather.
I think we stole something.
I love sweater weather.
I'm just, well, I'm not a sweater kind of guy, but when I got out of New York, I said, number one. First, I mean, I, I wear my sweatshirts and stuff, my ditz and whatever.
So, so I'm going to your point of like. They didn't want, we wanted a green, I said, they wanted a green way. Our plants are for greenway. You're saying you don't want to do a greenway?
Yeah, like.
Permitted by rights.
Yeah. It's, it's, so it's like then we have.
What day?
You might even get some snow.
I saw that on Sunday, but it's gone now.
Okay.
For example, they don't like, is that something that they can have?
It's, it's the cold this week.
So like, let's say.
Fifty seven for a high.
They can't, they can't be talking about all brick. And they can't be putting a lot of demands on it. It is what it is.
No, I agree with that.
No, no, I'm just saying like we can.
Yeah, it said 51.
Thursday's, Thursday's 50, 20 shots. So you might be lucky to get 50.
Thanksgiving sucks too. It's going to rain Thursday and Friday.
It's like they kind of got used to that.
Saturday.
Oh, they put it back in. Cause it was Thursday, Friday, Saturday, then they took Saturday out.
Eighty six percent chance that it rained for like two hours.
Yeah, they, I mean.
I, I was expecting to not be a problem today. And I was out much today.
I want to be meteoric. I want to be wrong all the time.
Unless you live in, where was that somewhere in your part, they, they. So it was canceled this huge gathering and how. Because there's a huge chance of a storm and it was sunny and beautiful all day and they fired them.
Y'all taking anyways?
Some country.
Are you saying?
For some special user like.
Can do that because it's the National Weather Service. Um, outside of the commercial.
Be like whales.
That'll really.
Really.
Yeah, how can you get that so screwed up though?
That someone, someone applies into a conditional district?
Like an ICD?
It's like, oh yeah, the hurricane. Yeah, just make left from an altar.
This is where some cod, codif and stuff kind of got made mixed up.
Oh, I'm like the, this last improbable system didn't do any worse than this.
Okay, so some, so they're trying to do their work at my house.
In the heritage.
Good evening.
I went tomorrow at 10:30.
They're coming in. And I responded, they're going to kill me, but I can't leave 10:30. I could do.
This is the information.
You respond, okay.
Anything else is like, there's like a hard line and everything else that you want to talk.
Don't worry about it. We'll have to do it a different time or.
It's, it's, it's in the light gray.
It sounds.
I kind of visualize it like I'm asking, this is your. It's like, it's, it's, it doesn't even matter because they can change it. Like, like they can say.
This is what I'm trying to teach. And as he always assumes that everybody knows the story, so his answers are very short. Non-descriptive. There you go. I'm like, he has got to, got to be descriptive. You gotta explain what you're talking about so that.
Jason was the same thing. And I'm like, who, who is, what is? Just say the mall. Don't say it.
Right. Cause if you're just come walking into room and reading that, you have absolute.
So.
Yeah.
Alright.
I understand it all.
Tell the house, my phone. Without anything, I got in, tried to get my keys and.
Jones Holmes, he did the one that was.
I know.
They've been very good.
Uh, yeah, actually I feel pretty liberated. Play what you're doing.
Mike's getting caught up.
So especially. Have just like their, one of these meetings every night. It was kind of like the first ones, but if you don't have it happen.
Well, like I heard a question about how much the house is going to cost. And if this is.
It's going to take about two weeks. It's a good, it'll be a good lick.
Oh, and that's what I told, they didn't have.
Really trying to get my business up there and says that I can just stay in the shop. And just, or anything. I just, you know, I've, I've started without. I'm building people. It's just that outdoor furniture is a lot quicker turnaround. There's not as much finish, how much change. All that, but I would like to get into like fine furniture.
Doors, but such.
Like cabinetry and stuff.
No, I'm. Doesn't block you being furniture, where that information.
Trust me, they did that.
I want to pay for that shit, like when it's not like.
And that's why, that's why the whole form base code.
Furniture suit trendy now. I feel like it's. Been so many odd.
There's a YouTube.
If they, if they want.
If they, if they want.
They have tables with the. He's getting thirty grand up top.
And they probably want to amend the code.
Yeah.
You're used to that and they go. It's like, would be frustrated with not being able to do that.
I'd like to learn that oxy process.
Okay.
I wanna do. I watched this guy.
Potential for future annexations soon. Is that not really the current.
Guys like me that have a shop.
I'd have to go back.
I mean, that's really good. He passes on the job and he got into YouTube. He's just, he does now is just create products, make prototypes and then put it out. My friend Casey, she's.
Well, it sounds like you're almost to the end of your. If you only have, if that's, if that's the last track, it's like, if you can just get.
I said, you know what, I said, I got a job. Usually split in my marketing. So. Yeah, so her husband, they have to be. Her husband's seen a company in, in Williams Port Pressing, so they go up there ten days a month. So they told her, they should be back for tomorrow, I think. When she gets back, hopefully she'll finish my website that Ross Jones was working on. Start doing the social media. Facebook and all that stuff.
But I will tell you something, I'll go and I'll be like, that's really cool. I see you.
If that happens, I would definitely say.
Would I too answer?
A company?
I was saying, yeah, plan. An existing plan for approval. Then they come in and they build, they wanna build. Sure the plans for my part. And then rent, only rent, isn't that running a business? You can't sit, you can't buy a house. They only rent homes. No, we didn't sign up for that because that in my view is running a business because there's one landlord and you have twenty-six homes. It happened here. It's happening everywhere. It's, you know, because I always thought land is so expensive here. Nobody's gonna wanna put cheap siding on that anyways unless a company like. Purchases a pre-existing plan. It says we've been inherited. Um, yep, nothing's for sale. Is that not operating the business? And we didn't get any permit to do that.
But it was, but they weren't the original applicant.
I wasn't asking. It doesn't matter. They bought a plan, the original applicant.
Just, I just wanted to clarify, I understand what you're asking. I just wanted to clarify, they weren't the original applicant that they bought in the construction.
They never, they never touched the dirt, the original applicant. They sold it after a year or so. They found them as it is, they went for it with the plan and they built homes exactly what the plan said.
Okay.
And it's all rentals, one landlord.
All rentals, one landlord, are the properties subdivided?
Just like.
Okay, so they were subdivided, they just, I'm gonna tell you something. Single, they done?
No. Corporation, American Home Rentals. Oh, they're. They rent, like, they seek out, aren't a great place for schools. They know there's always gonna be a need for rentals because people want to get in. Some people like to live in that area before they buy. This is a, a great opportunity. So why is that a business? Because we didn't approve a business.
If the, if the laws are individually platted out, anyone can buy those. And if you're, if you're the plan that approved, um, can't really get into rental or ownership. But, yeah, it would be one thing if the built environment, the streets, the sidewalks, the plating, the, the, the houses. Weren't built to the standard that you set, but if they are, that really gets into a really area legal issue that I would advise somebody returning about, but.
Is there any way you can rent that?
You're getting into an H O A.
Yeah, then, which we don't, you don't have control over the H O A documents. I mean, we do ask for our audience, like once we need to see them slash just have them as part of their. Permit, like construction document, document, uh, submission. And the other thing too, is especially for renting thing is like, you used to be able to regulate rentals differently from a use standpoint. A lot of that changed with one sixty D. You used to be able to regulate short-term, long-term rentals, all that stuff. Then they just merged it all into mine and basically you took away a lot of the municipality authority on what you can regulate.
So that's what's, and that was one of the topics we were on is, is all of the Airbnb and Verba. Where we're having issues in some areas where these short-term rentals are disrupting neighborhoods. And it's difficult because municipalities to step in and you can't do that. So.
Well, it's just, it's like, I remember, I mean, Airbnb is actually contributing to the housing shortage, so it's, it's a lot of things that. No longer for their rents, got landlords literally kicking them out or quitting their leases and hurting, like hurting their properties.
More money in.
As long as you know, a lot of the money in the short-term rentals that there are, and it's easier because Joe has more. You know, it's, it's much easier instead of chasing somebody one bit further. You, you go through a party that's excellent for you. And they advertise. And I have these clean, that's just a super buddy.
Um, actually is.
Yeah, that's the other question that there's some really good resources on this government website. Enough to follow up with some resources. Yeah, there's a lot of case law and it's definitely not a, uh, to confirm question one way or the other. It's, it's definitely in process.
Hey guys, I don't know if anyone's speaking, but they're, they're not coming through.
There it is. So I'll share that with you with, with, uh, some of the rules and regulations because I own a couple condos there too. And it's very strict to, uh, outside of the H O A to do V R P O and, and Airbnb. So maybe we can share some of that.
I mean, is there not a different tax structure for landlords?
No. From a rental standpoint, what a lot of the municipalities, like I said, like the definition changed. It's all considered dwelling rentals have been, can be a use, but like I said, it's very vague slash doesn't give the municipalities much authority to regulate. What some municipalities that have like larger, or more of this thing, like they do, it's not necessarily a special tax, but they charge the occupancy tax and stuff where they're just getting revenue and stuff from it. There's certain things like that, but it's, I wanna say all this like cha, this all changed, like it was either with one sixty D or right before or in the middle of it, like in twenties, between twenty sixteen and twenty eighteen. And I'm not sure if there's been any case law or anything that's came out since or where, where, where it stands. I, I just, I know when I was in grad school, like this was a topic. And it was discussed and I know like even when I started, um, after grad school, like once again, the whole rental thing came out because when we were working on Caldwell County's crop land. There's a very similar issue that they were running into with regulating rentals or having short-term rentals and all that. So, um.
There was a recent case with the city of Wilmington. Um, and I was just hearing about this at the EPA and some conference, but. I don't remember all the implications, but I think it was stated that there are still some regulations that can address. And so I'd encourage you to look into the city of Wilmington case, um, because I know that there's some good direct implications from that.
Land use perspective is that the use of property is still residential. Yeah, it's not a business use. So that's why you can't get them on land use. You have to get them on regulation.
So you're saying you can't get them on a, buying up a whole, uh, new home community?
That, that's.
You can't prevent, I know right before it was, were informed, it went to court and it was.
It was no point, no way, huh?
Builders making money too, so it's not, it's not, it's not the fact you're missing money, it's what you're doing.
Now, people are also starting to buy up, actually I know someone who's doing this, not here in Marvin, but they're buying up large homes. And they're doing this new kind of affordable, affordable housing where you have a shared common space, but the rooms are being rented out. It's all done by app, like, there are all these regulations on it, but it's so that, you know, young professionals.
Who signs up for that one?
You beat the prize.
That's what, that would fit our, our zone because we only allow single family.
Single family, yeah. But I'm saying that, those type, like they're all different. People are getting really creative with this.
Well, to your point, they're always ahead of governments regardless. They're always gonna be.
Right, so it's like, how, how's a, how's a small government? Not that we'll, we won't be facing this as much as say like, you know, like up in Andersonville where you've got lots of vacationing, you know, going on, but like. How does a small government and planning board deal with these, you know, like people wanting to put like a container home in their backyard to use as an accessory structure because of, you know, they want an extra office, right? But then it's not, you know, then, so it, it's like that kind of stuff that where people are just getting creative and using materials in different ways. How do we, you know, how, are we nimble enough to address those?
Part of it is addressing it in a way, in being proactive. So it can, a container in someone's backyard. I'm, I'm, I'm picturing like a box truck, you know, like it just a big.
A shipping container.
There's actually a restaurant in Asheville that is completely made of shipping containers. It's wonderful. It's like the Supper Club or Smoky Mountains, like Supper Club.
But it can also be.
If, in the testers, if that's what you decide you want, then, then great, but being proactive to say, yes, we are going to allow accessory structures. And they have to look this way, they have to be this way, they're this size, they're this, or this, you know, setbacks. That would be a good approach because there is. And allowing that and then deciding who can actually.
Some.
Family and family.
Some, some municipalities are starting to get, this whole Airbnb thing is, you know, they bring in maybe large parties. Say you took your home and you decided to leave for a while and you're renting Airbnb and you're doing parties. How does that affect? How, how does that affect everybody else's neighborhood in the values down because it's party central down there? So communities are starting to discuss it. You know, around us and how you, I guess, how do you put the laws in place for that? I mean, Airbnb is pretty good about controlling that kind of stuff or, or making the story disappear if you will.
Most new, most new, um, we have a townhouse in Columbus County and they have a hoteling. Like they have policy in the H O A about also about percentage of rentals. So like, once they hit a threshold, you have to, you know. It's, you're done. Like you can't, you can't rent your property even like long term.
We can, we can, you know, moving forward, I can look at the rental stuff and do you bring that back to, I'm working council probably after December meeting, so I'm gonna be busy. But, um, we'll get back on track with the training and, but I'll definitely, I'll check out that case and definitely, like I said, overall when it comes to it, so depending on what the use is and certain things, but we can definitely look at. Case law and kind of what, which we have authority and not, um, because I know it definitely came up when we amended the accessory dwelling language earlier this year as well, so.
The only thing I'll say is, these are great questions to be asking and this is exactly the kind of work you should be doing as a planning board. Um, you know, lots of cities have been proactive and even done. Uh, plans to address this and really get a sense of what you're saying, like what are other communities doing, what's the case law? And so questions like this are definitely, give us a planning board, like that's the kind of work you should be doing. Uh, so this, this is great. Um, so we're gonna get a little bit into, uh, the actual operations of the planning board and we'll go quick through this first part. But just as a reminder, um, Michelle talked a little bit, but really your role as the planning board is to be advisory. Um, so you kind of have a unique position between planning staff and the governing board, um, and processes and, and how you inform the final decision that's made by the governing board. And next line. So again, just a reminder, some of the general duties that you could have, um, zoning text amendments, zoning map amendments, um. Work with comprehensive plans and adopting comprehensive plans. We talked about subdivision regulation, development agreements and other plans. Uh, next one. So this is just kind of getting into the nuts and bolts a little bit. Um, but, um, as planning boards, all meetings, um. Are going to be open to the public and, um, made in a formal environment, you know, with public notification as you all are aware. Next line. Uh, so just a little bit about notice. These are the, the three kinds of notice and this is really for legislative hearing notices. So if you were to make a zoning text amendment or a zoning map amendment, um, but really the three ways this time is through newspaper, you posted notice and first-class mail.
By the way, I have a constituent that taught me a long time ago, but, uh, loves the fact of the mark of Zorro. Uh-oh, there's another sign with the mark of Zorro. It, it's kind of a clever thing. No matter where you go into town, you see Zorro. Uh-oh, something's going on here.
Mm-hmm. And, uh, the other thing I'll say is that, um, under the statutes theoretically, um, in the planning board. Could technically make a recommendation during a, a joint hearing, kind of like a joint meeting like we're having tonight. Um, so I don't know if that's ever something that you have done as a planning board, but. You know, in processes where, you know, you're trying to move a little bit more quickly and maybe the, the space between a planning board and, um, governing board meeting is prohibitive. There are options to combine both, um, in a joint hearing. Next line. Alexa. Um, it's basically the process for a zoning amendment, you know, your role and responsibility is to review and comment. And then the, you know, you need to reference consistency with the land use plan and other adopted plans. As we said, there's also, you know, the Greenway, uh, Parks and Rec Master Plan. Community survey report, um, other plans that you can create. Um, majority vote is needed. And a really critical part here is, um, if no written report from the planning board comes within thirty days of referral, the governing board can act. So they must wait thirty days in order to make whatever decision, but if as a planning board, you do not provide recommendation within thirty days. They do not need a recommendation. So that's just important to keep in mind. Um, and again, your role is advisory. Um, obviously I, I hope you have a great working relationship with the governing board, um, and they, they take everything that you say, um. But, um, they're, they're not bound by the recommendation. Um, so just to keep that in mind, as Michelle was kind of alluding earlier, there are a lot of decisions that happen. Administratively before and legislatively after. So just, you know, it's good to keep a healthy perspective on what your position is in the process. Next line. Um, so this is getting into, um, basically what you do and what you should be considering as you're making a. Um, basically what you do and what you should be considering as you're making a map or text amendment. Uh, the number one thing is read the staff report. I'm sure they make lovely staff reports for you all to read. Um, so really just take the time to read through that and, and soak in all the information and. Ask questions beforehand before you're ever in the meeting. Um, this is the side if possible. I mean, you really can't substitute for actually going and seeing the site conditions. Um, and then again, looking at all the contextual information that we've discussed. What is the current land use? Um, have you looked at the zoning ordinance to really understand that? Um, what are the adopted plans and how do they relate? And what additional information do you need? I think really the key to this is just taking time beforehand to really, um. You know, amongst our busy schedules to really ask questions so you can get the information you need before. The meeting and before you're required to make your decision. Next slide.
Can I insert one thing? If it is a general zoning district. Then you look at the staff report. You understand what's in your land use plan. And you pontificate about that, how, what you're seeing in front of you. You know, lines up with the document plan. And from the planning board's perspective, you say, does it seem to meet the line or does it not? And if there's not a lot of information, you might say, hey, you might need some more information, but. If it's not conditional, there's not a whole lot more you can do. If you're in the Heritage District, you can ask the things all day long. Now, the developer has to agree to it. And they have to agree to it writing, but you can add a lot of conditions. But if it's just somewhere else, it's a general zoning district. You can talk about the cost of the houses, you can talk about that brick and that nice overhang, throat porches, garages. But they're not bound by it at all. And so if there's a lot of public sitting out here. And you're talking about those things that you, that the developer's really not bound to. It can create some confusion if the developer doesn't do what they talked about here. It's not binding. So just kind of keep that in mind.
What if I'm a programmer side, like this particular subdivision to look at? What if the planning board is looking at and says. I don't like that anyway. Yeah, I don't like that both side. Yeah, I didn't like the way that's this, in other words. You're looking at it from, I'm looking at it from a artistic standpoint. And. The developer's saying, I'll be happy to fix that. I'll be happy to fix that. I'll be happy to fix that. In other words, everything that's going on is not even carrying to the land use plan. In other words, it's all of a sudden like. Planning board is deciding up right there, meaning land use plan. Is that going to happen? Or it's like reversed, you know what I mean? Okay. It's, it's like all of a sudden, wait a minute, you got to be different we want, but doesn't fall into. Regulations and rules, the, the, the zoning, it's like. We just have a canvas and, you know. You know, land use on one subdivision.
And if it is a general zoning district. That canvas can be taken upon, a whole kind of localized plan is created in that moment in the hearing. And then when that developer goes to lap the lots and go to board, just. All of that nice thing that was talked about. Let's say somebody else comes in and buys it. You know, that, that person comes and goes, but. The regulations are in place. I'm not going to be binding for all those nice things that we're talking about in the approved minutes. But it is a general zoning district, no conditional at all. So that's where there could be some confusion. Especially, you know, if I'm sitting out here and I live, you know, a mile down the road, I have some expectations. I'm going to then like to the, I wouldn't have the planning board buying it, you know?
But it's. You're. Should be good, correct?
No. If you're.
If, if the. Developer agrees to it and writing.
If it's. If this is a conditional district.
Okay.
Like the Heritage District, yes.
Yes, just like clear. So what, everything we just did with the heritage zoning and those conditions. Those are put in the development agreement. They were agreed upon between the, by the applicant and the council when approved. Um, they were put in the development agreement, signed, reported, that makes it binding. So if Jones Holmes were to sell. Whoever purchased it would have to follow that approved plan. The other, the, the other side of that is exactly what you were just talking about with Bar, with, uh, Barcroft. Is that if plants get approved. In a conventional district and so on, we, you know, it changes. They had to follow the, the site plan that was approved from a subdivision standpoint, but as in. Some of the requirements of like with the house, like other things, they're not necessarily binding, um, unless it's on the plot. Like if, for example, like the Greenway Trail, if it's on the plot and it's dedicated to us and it's. It's part of their original kind of approvals, some of that is binding part, part of that. Like if somebody was to purchase that development. And it's in the construction documents, the developers and install a trail. It's kind of there, um, as well as the easements on the final plot if it's been recorded, but from a. Actual what the house is and so on, the, yeah, none of that's binding unless it's a conditional district. Those are great questions. Thanks. Um. So just talking a little bit about, you know, public comments and as Michelle was alluding, kind of the, the things you should be discussing and considering, um. You know, you're going to hear and I'm sure you have heard a million different sorts of complaints, you know? Traffic congestion, school crowding, you know, every little thing, noise, light. Um, and you know, while. Those are important and you do want to, you know, listen to the public. Really, everything you ask and consider should be going back towards. The plan, um, the plans that you have, the vision that has been set forth and for the community and those plans, um.
Can I, can I ask a quick question because I meant to ask this and then I forgot what I was supposed to ask? You can't really hold someone to your land use plan if your ordinances do not reflect your land use plan, correct? I mean, don't you have to like, once you do your land use plan, you have to then work to either create ordinances or. Alter ordinances to reflect.
Exactly.
Plan.
So the, the land is.
He was having problems because a lot of my understanding is the orders in the past were contradictory. A lot of cases, so the developer, you see it once and then it's contradictory and that's kind of why our goal was to kind of clean flow.
Yeah, since we adopted the millennial plan, and it's like came up the Heritage District, right? There's goals and recommendations in there, but unless you update. The actual, uh, right, the ordinance regulations, which are the governance type of document that applies. Then those are kind of goals, recommendations, like it depends on what's being submitted, but like. Yeah, like the regulations or recommendations in this. If the regulation and the ordinance, the adopter ordinance contradict, then that's what applies because that's what is the actual legal standing document to make decisions about. And further, the governing board does not have to, uh. You know, say that you put in your, uh, statement of consistency with the land use plan for a recommendation. Legislative decisions don't necessarily have to follow that, so. It is, you know, a little bit tricky, but it really boils back to. Um, justifications should consider the land use plan and obviously it's, it's not legal in the sense of an ordinance, but that's really where. The source of your considerations should be.
Yeah, it just takes so long to. Update the or, you know what I mean? Like it's, it's so much work to update the ordinance and clean them up and get them organized and.
Well, that's why I have 160D kind of helped with that is that now it requires municipalities to have the land use plan and they have to be updated like every five, 10 years. I can't remember.
Yeah. So just as we get these ordinances updated, it'll be time to write a new one.
Well, the intent of that is like, most of the time municipalities adopt land use plans. I mean, ours before twenty twenty was two thousand and five. And. They would sit on shelves and because the, the goal of that is to be the vision and the goals and recommendations, what you're trying to achieve. Well, then they would sit on shelves and the ordinances would never change. So now if you have to go through this process of updating, amending, re-adopting, land use plan, like. From what I, what I take away from it's like, it's trying to be proactive and always making sure that your ordinances don't lack behind of. What you're, you're trying to achieve. And that, and I do think our ordinances to an extent have gotten to that point, but.
So maybe on the next land use plan. Not only is, are we setting a vision, but it's also about identifying. Which of our current, current ordinances do not meet that land use plan so that we have like a, a pecking order of which ones we need to start crossing first.
Plans are great to basically go ahead and justify and put into action. Changes to the ordinance or studies or anything, because if any, if, at any point, you're going to say, hey, we've seen what the community's vision is. We need to implement it, it's right as you've adopted a plan. But same if, if you have modified the plan and, and gone through that legislative process to update and modify the plan. And that is an opportunity to then go ahead and in tandem, update, update the ordinances to reflect those changes. Which that's why we did the small area plan. Because we didn't. The whole, kind of did it backwards before I started. We did the land, the smaller plan to be kind of, as they were saying earlier, a very specific plan to the Heritage District specifically. Well, then all those most recommendations are kind of what the form-based code is, so that's, that's one step, but. We also created the language for the plan. In theory, I mean, obviously it got adopted in a different way, but yeah, that's why. Uh, and that small airplane was an amendment to our land use plan, so it's kind of. Was trying to achieve something, I mean, yes, but it's, yes, it's looking at it from a greater context and how we can always continue to. To make those changes and try to, uh, achieve the goals and recommendations in those plans. Perfect. So we'll go and go to the next slide. So these are just some additional, again, um, types of. Um, reviews that you might do, whether it's, you know, a new plan or amendment to a plan. Subdivision regulations, development processes and. You know, again, it's the same process of reviewing and commenting, majority vote, and then the recommendation going to the governing board. Um, next slide. Uh, after an annexation and, and establishing that initial zoning. I'm not exactly sure, varies by ordinances, but it'll be the same general process of an opportunity to review and comment, majority vote. Um, and then go into the governing board. Next slide. So this is just a little bit on the actual setup of your planning board, so. Seven regular members, um, chair and vice chair, which. Both have here today, so these are your chairs and vice chairs.
Hanging.
Um, so for voting, you'll need a quorum, which if all the positions are filled, would be four. Um, but if not, um, that it would be a majority of the positions that have been filled. And then your planning, uh, contact is going to, you know, be staffed to the board in a term of three years. So, next slide. You should have a rules of procedures. Is this something for the newer board members that you've received, read through? Um, and is this something that?
Alexa, is there rules, do you have rules of procedure for Austin?
Yeah, so you should be able to find it in the ordinance, but this could be a good opportunity, um, not to put anything on you, but. Whether it's even just, you know, a session before your next planning board meeting to just, you know. Uh, really reconfirm what the rules of procedures are, um, in terms of.
So they do have, they do have rules of procedure. They were updated, I believe, beginning of this year. It's something we give the board members whenever, uh, we appoint a new one. They all should have at least a digital copy of it, if not physical.
Perfect. So just know that that's there as a resource to kind of know and understand, uh, procedures. Next slide. So conflicts of interest, this is a fun one, so. As a planning board, um, you know, it's not as strict as, um, if you were a, um. Board of adjustments, Michelle will be talking with later, but there still are conflicts of interest. And really, when you're making decisions. Um, as you'll see bolded here, this is really what to consider if. You would have direct, substantial and readily identifiable financial impact. Or that, uh, there would be that kind of impact on you as a, a member. Um, and you know, that could be through voting property. And the area that is being considered could be through a, a close familial business, um, or associational relationship. Um, and. You know, really the thing here, we'll get into basically what to do in a conflict.
Just to let you know, I own a property in Marvin Heritage District, and I've already said I'm going to recuse all voting processes. That are related to the Marvin Heritage District on the planning board.
Yep, so let's go ahead, let's go. Let's go and go to the next slide. Yep, so basically, uh, right here, the resolution of objection. It would basically be if an objection was raised to a board member and it wasn't proactively addressed as you have. Um, and if this were to happen, which obviously it's not going to, because y'all are awesome and on top of it. Um, it would be a majority vote, um, by the members of the board as to whether or not the person should recuse themselves. Um, and that's just down here, it's another more detailed. Uh, definition of what the familial relationship could be, and as, as you can see, it's pretty broad and could include even. Grandparent, grandchildren, in-laws, step-half, uh, relationships as well, so just be aware of that and, uh, next slide. And, you know, as, as you said, it's good to be proactive in conflicts of interest, and if there's doubt. Air on the side of caution, but if there was a conflict, you'd want to immediately declare it at the beginning of the meeting. You'd want to abstain from deliberation and voting. Um, you'd want to leave the room, so you wouldn't necessarily be an influence on the decision. And as it says, don't voice opinions or concerns on the matter. Next slide. So these are just some final kind of thoughts, um, on your responsibilities, um, as board members and. Uh, you know, you, as a board member, have an obligation to contribute, you know, you volunteer your time to be on this and. Uh, that also comes with the responsibility to contribute and be an active member of the board. And that involves asking questions, um. You know, thinking before you respond and vote. You have lots of great resources with, with staff, um, and the reports that give you. Uh, to have all the information you would need, so definitely utilize that. Um, and again, take time beforehand, before the meeting to read through the agenda, read through the packet. Understand to the extent that you have the time for what kinds of decisions are, are going to be made. Um, you know, put aside your own biases. This is hard, especially in, in a smaller town when you might know people. Um, you know, to, to do that. Um, and that doesn't mean to put aside your, uh, your opinions, um, or your unique thoughts or contributions, but. Biases that you know, um, would affect what you decide on. Um, and again, that just goes to making the right decision and not the popular one. Uh, things as the land use plan, it really is the community's at-large's voice on. The direction they want the community to grow and, um, that really should be the foundation of what you all. Decide, not simply what you want, but what the community has voiced that they want. Um, and again, just, you know, be a good person and show patience and show respect. This is a hard, complicated process and. Um, you know, there's full-time staff involved, but there's lots of people who are members of the public who. Really deeply care, but might not have the knowledge or exposure that you all have, so. Um, just be patient and show respect and realize that we're all people who just want the best for the community. And again, just understand the village code, just like, do the research. Maybe, uh, if you really want to fall asleep at night, read the ordinances or other plans and, uh. And, uh, you know, you can get sleepy doing that, but really take the time to just know what the, the rules of the community. Next slide. And again, just some more informal rules and I, I won't, um, go through these because they're basically the same, but, uh. You know, just really, um, value that you're being a representative for the community and, you know, you should act as such, but also have fun. So with that, I'm going to go to Michelle.
You don't have to worry about it and you don't have to vote, so.
Right, um.
I went ahead and said it because he was about to say it, so I just went ahead preemptively struck. Sorry.
I know, I, I will, what I, when I think of it, but she threw me with the voting thing.
He tells me that every time I see him, so it's one of them, like just get it in.
Uh, we've got about ten minutes to put you through three years of law school.
Okay, let me ask you this. Who cannot be on the board? Who cannot be on the board of adjustments?
Who cannot be on the board of?
Yeah, like I would assume a council member cannot be on the board of adjustments, correct?
That would be, that would be. That would be, that would be ill advised.
Okay.
Because you would be.
Planning board member?
There are communities that do have a joint planning board and Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
Didn't we function as the Board of Adjustments at one, at one time?
You.
We used to.
You, uh, not to my knowledge, we've always had a Board of Adjustment, but one thing is that since our Board of Adjustment only currently sees variances in appeals. Uh, which I don't even know if we ever had a bill, and we've had.
We've seen variances back in the day.
Yeah, they might have come to you guys for a recommendation, but the two that I've done, I don't think came to you guys this year, but.
There has been talks with Austin and and staff as well, I think maybe you mentioned the council of looking at. Ex combining planning board and Board of Adjustments to an extent, just because Board of Adjustments does not meet that often. Um, and I think you. As we're about to mention, like, most communities, I'll do this already, their their Board of Adjustment wears two hats with that, as in. Or the acting, or sorry, the planning board is the Board of Adjustment, so if there was any type of actual variance or quasi judicial decision. You guys would turn that hat on and it would be the severity, but, um. But no, currently, planning board doesn't review any type of quasi judicial.
We we did, we we used to.
Okay.
Because we were, we were trained in it and then we had a situation where we had to. We went into a quasi judicial. Yes, so I guess I don't know when the Board of Adjustment was created separately.
Oh, it's been around for a while.
Yeah.
But do you remember when, um, the, that, that school was trying to buy? Property. I forgot what it was, Bonds Grove. It was like they were trying to be a high school, right?
Oh, right, right.
Right, so we ended up, the planning board ended up going into a quasi judicial. Um, situation there, because like, there were people emailing us privately and like, we weren't allowed to respond to them and.
I I I don't think that was for a Board of Adjustments issue though.
No, but it was quasi judicial.
It was by the.
Special use permit, but planning board from a special use permit, they they, you guys. See the application and provide a recommendation to council with council, unless that, I don't know if when that changed. The council is the one that is the governing board to decide on special use permits. They do it in a quasi, they have to do it in a quasi judicial fashion and follow that procedure, but, um.
But I mean, it never came to us, like.
No, it was never.
Wait, they withdrew. Yeah, but I feel like it went through you guys first.
They almost, I think they withdrew before we even heard it, yeah. So in what situations would a planning board that is not, does not function as a Board of Adjustments even be in a quasi judicial situation?
And then that's where the special use permit authority comes in, is depending on. How the ordinance for that municipality gives that authority, sometimes planning board. Is the governing body to approve and then review and approve special use permits, and that's a quasi judicial process. But our ours is, is, uh, council's that governing board. For that decision.
So there's really no. Reason at this time that we would have to go into a quasi judicial situation.
That's fine, not per our ordinance unless there's something that you can think of.
Next question.
You know, I'm always full of questions, okay, so we, we are, to your point earlier, we're trying to get ahead of the situation and we are. Uh, formed a group called WUMA, which is Western Union Municipality Alliance. It's made up of us, Weddington and Waxah, now Waxah, recently Mineral Springs, and Wesley Chapel and Stallings. So those are, you know, I'm there, Andy's there most of the time, elected officials. It used to be a mayor's group where we'd just talk and find out things, so we are looking at, um. ETJ and and doing a presentation to the county with ETJ, which is not within our boundaries. Do you advise that we consider putting on? An additional planning board person that's outside of Marvin force for that?
You're required to, if you, if you have an ETJ, um.
Go ahead and explain the ETJ.
ETJ stands for extra territorial jurisdiction. So it's an area outside of the municipal boundary that the municipality regulates for planning and zoning. And so the issue there is you may have a person living there that doesn't vote. For Marvin officials, but they are regulated by the ordinances of Marvin.
Providence Downs South, you know.
Yeah. If you, if you obtain, the the benefits of having an ETJ and why communities do it. Is so that you can regulate zoning outside of your jurisdiction, so that as you're thinking about annexing. You're not annexing stuff that you would never want, so you're basically getting the types of, you know, development that you would prefer. And so then when you annex, you know, you, you're getting good stuff.
So unfortunately, one of the issues with. If you looked at our ordinances or, you know, basically R40 zoning and stuff, but. These donut holes that have been created, thank you, state officials, I guess, from years ago, but. They are what they are, and. As we're trying to, because we've talked about not increasing taxes because the tax base is right, right within us, I mean, there are. Providence Downs South is a perfect example of that, what we would bring in just alone from those homes and the cars and all the different things. Um. But to some extent, some of those neighborhoods are not anywhere near where. You know, like as far as the the R40, um, some of them are.
The neighborhoods that, certain neighborhoods that surround here have, based off of what the county zoning is, is not, it's not consistent with ours. Like horror, but. We have the residential union county, which has a lot of existing development, it was basically vested zoning district, those setbacks and everything apply, so. Um, but with the whole ETJ conversation, like, yeah, that's where if we're doing the UDO, we might expand on potential zoning districts where we have some more. Um. Just kind of a variety, not necessarily that we result in existing properties, but maybe we have different districts that could maybe more line up with what potential either. Properties that could be in the future ETJ or even, to your point, annexed in. Uh, the biggest thing I know. From an ETJ, ETJ standpoint is the discrepancies between the municipal zoning and the county zoning. And that's kind of what, that's why a lot of these municipalities are wanting ETJ, so you do have that kind of push in, so where it's more kind of consistent. But on top of, yes, it's a great annexation tool because. You're already regulating it from a zoning standpoint. If they want to vote or something, I mean, it's it's a, it brings, it's it's an easier kind of conversation to have than just trying to get an annex straight down, but. Well, if you guys want to get into quasi judicial, um.
About 30 minutes. This is like point of procedure, we can do this a couple ways. We can either agree to extend the time this evening. And I'll be glad to, I'll be glad to do that. Or if you'd prefer to have another session, either in-person or virtual, just to do quasi judicial. Then we can certainly do that, so I'll leave it up to y'all. Oh, yeah, I could report it too.
I think, and council, this is more for you. You guys have done recently, haven't you done school, got any quasi judicial training, you have it?
I did years ago.
Yeah, years ago.
Yeah, it's more. Mentioned if we combine the word adjustments, so it'd be nice, if you don't mind me if.
I don't vote.
Don't get into it tonight, maybe record it, we can, especially if we combine, that might be the best approach, I mean, that's just my.
We have a candidate member that's absent, so if you want to record it, it would be.
We have two.
Yeah. Two.
Two what?
Hey, yes, he is, we have two, sorry, this is missing.
Four way.
That's what I was gonna say, we could record it because not all of the councils here, and I think it's very important.
And we're gonna have the slides, right, and so like, because I definitely want to use these slides for any type of initial training.
I like pictures, but, um.
If if they keep going, should we adjourn our portion?
Oh, we're not, we're, we're not.
Oh, okay, she's just saying record it, like on.
I think, I think they're saying, and let me clarify if I'm incorrect, that we would. Halt the discussion tonight. We would record a Board of Adjustment slash quasi judicial training module. That y'all could watch in your own time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good. It'd be good to refer to, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are they average?
Sure, I am, sure they do. But we won't have to.
Proceedings, but we've muddled three. With without our clerks and our, and our.
Yeah, and I think. The quasi judicial stuff is definitely very beneficial for council at the firm, or any Board of Adjustments. But if that role does get expanded to planning board, it's good to have that as a resource, we'll have that included where. Right here, if you guys want to watch it, feel free, but at the same time, if that. Once we actually maybe formally combine slash ever have. A quasi judicial meeting, we'll have that to refer back to, it's for the current planning board members, you know, future or whatever.
Yeah.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
So with that, um. Need a motion, with that, I need a motion to, um, adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Austin in favor, they're so excited.
We have to do our own, don't we?
Yep.
Yeah, so does anyone want to like to make a motion?
Yep.
So moved, second, all in favor? Done. Thank y'all for having us. Thanks for being here.
Hey Kelly, uh, who moved and who seconded that motion to adjourn?
Melinda moved and who seconded, Will seconded, and then, and then it was, um, all in favor, every, everybody unanimous.
Thank you, thank you guys.
Have a good night, Austin. I apologize for the Alexa comment.
Enjoy Durham, enjoy Durham. Thank you.
Boston, we missed you.